Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner London.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Samasko.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Here.
Item number three, the additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Do I have a motion to add A, B, C, and to delete item D?
I'll move the amended agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Support. Okay, we can add those at the...they will go into what? Q, R, and S. Yep.
Excuse me, could I request one more item be deleted? We were waiting until the very last minute to hear from Corporation Council on an issue, and it is...let me find it really quick. Landfill Regulatory Compliance Monitoring Agreement. We've had a couple of last-minute issues come up with the contract, and we have not been able to settle them, so we'd like to remove that as well.
The maker of the motion is that...
I'll amend my motion to approve the revised agenda with the removal also of item 11F.
And my support. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, approval of agenda? I move. Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, the meetings of previous meetings. Motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I would move at this time to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2012, Commission Meeting, September 27th, 2012 Budget Workshop, October 1st, 2012 Special Meeting, and the October 4th, 2012 Standing Committee Meetings be approved and filed.
Support. Discussion. None, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Proclamations were deleted, that moving on, Consent Agenda, items A through K.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of items A through J...excuse me, items 7A through 7K on the Consent Agenda.
Support. Any discussion on any of these? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Number eight, reports of standing and special committees. Bill.
A couple of things real quick. Just want to pay tribute to the dive team for saving a woman's life in the river the other day. They just happened to be on maneuvers out there when a woman decided she was going to go swimming, and they ended up having to save her. So kudos to the dive team for being alert and attentive. And also, there's some new legislation that was just passed regarding 9/11 phone calls that are bogus phone calls. And depending on the call that you send in, it could be anywhere from a misdemeanor to a felony. And I've talked with our central dispatch. They're going to bring themselves up to speed and see if...kind of keep an eye on things, see if that helps curb some of the bogus calls that come in.
Okay. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes, I've got some good news. Baumann Road, and also Rattle Run, if you haven't got your email, Baumann Road. County Road Commission has been working on this for a couple of years, and I talked with Kurt Weston, and at that point, you know, I have a history with the railroad, so I called the chief engineer, the chief safety engineer from CN Railroad, also the head of mechanical, Paul Werner, and also talked to the engineer, Mark Dupuy. And working with CN Railroad, Baumann Road, which is right at the Columbus Township Hall, is getting replaced from the 22nd to the 26th. Following that, Rattle Run Road will also be replaced the following week. So that's two very bad crossings that are going to get filled, and want to give CN a thank you, and also Andrea LaFontaine did some work. I contacted her, and she also contacted the railroad officials, and preceded things along, and got both railroad crossings repaired.
Good, good news. Any...Terry?
Just one item I would mention, that the Road Commission, on my request, is working on issue on the speed limit on Range Road between Sixth and Grashit. There's been a couple of accidents lately of some sincerity, and I've taken a look at it, and it looks to me like it's got...the speed limit is a little high, and they're going to do some work on it and perhaps lower that speed limit on that about a quarter mile between Sixth and Grashit.
Okay. Commissioner Samasko. No report. Commissioner Ward.
Nothing.
Commissioner Heideman.
I'd just like to comment on the, I guess you'd say, dedication ceremony for the river walk down in Atchison's property. Chair Bohm was on the stage and represented us well.
Yeah, great project. If any of you get an opportunity just to stop by and see the 200 or 300 foot, what they've done to it, and what that's going to look like, it really is going to clean that up. Good time.
By the way, we reached, I guess, a letter of understanding with the community foundation so that when they extend that river walk, they can wind it through that wetlands area that we will be acquiring from Atchison Ventures, I assume someday we'll get it. And following up on what Chair Bohm said, I would invite the entire public to go down there and take a look. It's very impressive.
Okay. I'm going to take a pass. We're going to move on to item number nine, the citizens wishing to address the board. Is there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move into unfinished business. No unfinished business. We're going to move on to new business. Item 11A, the approval of the county dispersments.
I'd make a motion to approve the County of St. Clair dispersments for the month of September 2012 in the amount of $35,890,450.53.
Second. Questions on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Got a roll call on that, Jeff? Oh, I'm sorry, back up. Roll call.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number B, the Library Board Bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the revisions to the library bylaws as revised in your packet.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number C, the Letter of Agreement with Community Mental Health for Prevention Services for the Intervention Center inmates.
This time, I would move to approve the Letter of Agreement with the St. Clair County Community Mental Health Authority for Prevention Services for Intervention Center inmates for a term of 10, 112 through 9, 30, 13, in the amount of $60,000 for a voice vote.
Second. Discussion on this. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number D, the Leeds Online Service Agreement with the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to ratify the service agreement with Leeds Online in the amount of $13,134 for a term of 315, 12 through 314, 15.
Support. Discussion on this. Roll call.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number E, the 2013 Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application.
This time, I would move to approve the Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application for fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $70,000.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number F was pulled. Item number G, the Metropolitan Planning Commission Bylaws Amendment.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the proposed amendment to the Metropolitan Planning Commission bylaws as presented.
I have a second. Support. Any discussion on this? David.
If you didn't receive a letter, I did get my questions answered. She gave me a very good letter back on why we're doing this, mainly to do with the Zoning, just nothing with the maps or anything, but just the zoning explanation, so.
Okay.
Very good, sent a very good letter back to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, item number H, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program III Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Number Three, Action Item Plan Amendment as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number I, the Professional Service Agreement for the Septage Secondary Containment Area Lining Installation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Professional Service Agreement with American Environmental Group Limited for the installation of GeoBrand for Septage Storage Tank Secondary Containment Area at the landfill. Geo membrane, excuse me.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item J, the Resolution 1230 of proportioning taxes for the 2012. I have a motion.
Yep. I would move the adoption of Resolution 12-30, apportioning taxes for 2012.
Support. Discussion. Who supported that?
Greatop.
Greatop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number K, Resolution 12-28 for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission issuance of the liquor license for the Convention Center.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to adopt Resolution 12-28, Michigan Liquor Control Commission issuance of liquor license for the Convention Center.
Support. Mr. Chairman. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, item number L, Professional Services Agreement for Document Shredding for Cintas.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the Professional Service Agreement with Cintas Document Management for Shredding Services for a three-year term, not to exceed $16,250.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner London.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item number M, the Library Manning Table Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the library request for the change in the manning table to replace a clerk position with a substitute assistant branch librarian position.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Courthouse Security, item number N, Courthouse Security Department Manning Table Changes.
This time, I would move to approve the courthouse security request for a change in classification from court security officer to bailiff, and for the reduction of two full-time bailiff positions and replacement with the equivalent of part-time personnel.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number O, the Workforce Development Board Reappointments.
Mr. Chair, I would move the appointment of Carter Hitzman, private sector, Mike Moran, labor sector, Renee Stephen, economic development, to the Workforce Development Board, each for a two-year term, expiring 8/114.
Support. Mr. Chairman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, the presentation of the budget. Before we do that, though, do you have an update for me on that baseball game down there, Mr. Greatop?
Still six... Did you add an R on that? Was there an R added? Still six to nothing, two strikes, one ball, one out.
Q, R, and S.
What do you mean? Scherzer still has a no-hitter going, fifth inning.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
And that's on the record.
I'm sorry.
Do you need a motion first?
Doesn't matter. I guess we can just have him talk. Let's get a motion.
At this time, I would move to receiving file the Administrative Controller, 2013 Proposed Budgets of the General Fund and Funds Receiving General Fund Appropriations.
I'll support that.
Okay. Bill?
Good evening. I'll just take a few minutes to go over some of the highlights of the process, and then Ms. Hepting will answer any questions you may have. She probably has some other items she'd like to cover as well. The proposal that's before you now represents a general, a balanced general fund budget This represents about a $3.2 million reduction from last year. It's 5.4%. This is the second year that the county has used its new budgeting process. As you recall, last year, we spent a lot of time meeting with elected officials and department heads, gave them targets. The process went very smooth. All of them met their targets. We did the same this year, began meeting with the elected officials and department heads, and throughout the year, provided them with some revised target numbers. We're pleased to let you know that all those targets that were identified for 2013 have been met. One of the changes, the new ideas that was introduced this year for the 2013 budget was the Budget Incentive Program. And you probably remember some of the details of the program. If you don't, I'm sure Ms. Hepting can cover those for you in a minute. But I just want to let you know that this year, a number of departments did decide to use the Budget Incentive Program, and that totaled about $317,000 in funds that will be carried over from '12 into '13 to help those particular departments manage their '13 budget.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Any idea of the range of who saved the most? I mean, not necessarily who did it, but what were the figures, from the lowest to the highest?
Two.
How much money they were able to save with the...you're talking the 70/30 split, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just curious how much they were able to save.
We had several departments that actually held some positions vacant for most of 2012, so I think the largest amount that one department was able to use was $70,000.
$70,000?
Yes.
And that was their 70% share of it?
Yes. And that had to do with several positions that they held vacant throughout the year.
Okay. Good, thank you. Good chunk.
So in total, the elected officials used about...I happened to find the form that you had prepared for me, Carrie. The elected officials used about $161,000 in budget incentive dollars, and the Administrator Controller side, about $156,000 in budget incentive. Staffing levels throughout the organization continue to decline in 2013. You'll probably find, as you thumb through here, the elimination of several dozen positions. Some of these are vacant positions, some of them are not. Some of those are part-time positions as well. Creating the '13 proposed budget has really presented quite a challenge for a number of offices. But one thing that has become apparent in the last couple of years, in spite of the cuts that most departments have experienced since 2008, is that operational efficiencies that have been introduced within those departments have enabled them to continue providing a high level of service to their customers. We expect that that will continue in '13. However, the...in looking forward to 2014, we expect that that year is going to be fairly difficult for us to manage as well. There'll be some additional challenges that the community will have to face, and department heads and elected officials. Discussions have already begun on what we might be able to do in '13 to help us prepare for 2014. Some of you have actually been engaged in some of those discussions. We believe that if some of those ideas are able to come to fruition, that that will certainly ease the burden in 2014. But obviously, we've got a long way to go before we will know if they will pan out. At the present time, however, we are pleased to present to you a balanced 2013 general fund budget, and we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed budget for adoption at a future date. Ms. Hepting, if you have anything that you care to share, if you want to go through this document that you shared with them...
I would suggest, I guess, since this is the first time we've seen this information, that I guess if you guys have any questions for Carrie, that contact her, and then we'll be...because we're not going to adopt till, oh, probably looking at the first week in November, and...
There is a budget workshop scheduled for next week if there's any specific items that the Board would like to discuss or go over as well, once you have time to look at this.
If you look on...
That make sense?
I believe on page three, there is a timeline, a proposed timeline.
Okay, let's take a look at it, and then if you guys decide that the budget workshop is something that needs to be in order for next week, we can go down that path. If you don't, then we'll see...let's see if we can play that one by here.
I just have three questions. Are you ready, Carrie? She's going to get the answers for me, and other than that, the budget looks very good, and I think everybody did a real good job trying to get to where we need to get to.
Terry?
On the retirement healthcare piece that we always talk about, you know, that we are and we're good for five years and so on and so forth, is there any new updates, Carrie, you can talk to us about that? I know we've contributed extra to it, but how are we doing with that piece?
We should be receiving our actuarial valuation very shortly, by the end of this month, so then we'll be able to see where we're at and what our contributions for pensions should look like, and then what we'll have available to put into healthcare. Right now, we did budget 21.5% for pension and healthcare, and depending what our valuations say, you know, the required amount will go towards pension, and the rest will go to healthcare.
Okay, I'll look forward to seeing that then when that comes out.
Okay. Just like to make a comment, Carrie and Bill, good job working with the different elected officials, department heads, putting this thing together. I've been here, as you all know, eight years, and some of these budget battles have been not fun, to say the least, and I think the process has been getting much better, so... We hit a motion and a second to receiving file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, moving on, item number Q, which is the Resolution 1231, adopting the collective bargaining agreement with the Circuit and Family Division Probate Employees Association.
Chairman, at this time, I would move to adopt Resolution 1231, adopting collective bargaining agreement with Circuit, Family Division, and Probate Court Employees Association.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, Resolution 1232, the collective bargaining agreement with the communications officers.
This time, I would move to adopt Resolution 12-32, adopting collective bargaining agreement with the communications officers of the POAM.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number S, the Resolution 1233 for the adopting the collective bargaining agreement with the front of court employees.
At this time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 12-33, adopting collective bargaining agreement with front of the court employees, SEIU.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number 12, Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items to go over for you in a, let's say, regular monthly update on the Convention Center project. As part of developing the 2013 budget, many of you are aware of the concerns that we have and the unanswered questions with part-timers in the Affordable Care Act, and the impact that the Act and the look-back period may have on our ability to use part-timers in many of our departments, and limiting the hours they can work. I've had some discussions with a number of department heads about how we're going to proceed and advising them on what they need to do for 2013, and I just thought I'd give you a quick update. In late October, we'll be meeting with Brown &amp; Brown, who are third-party administrators for our healthcare program. They've been following very carefully the Affordable Care Act and some of the rules as they roll out. In late October, we expect to get the latest information we can from the federal government on how the Affordable Care Act will affect part-timers in the look-back period. Depending on the information that we receive, we'll be providing direction to the department heads. They may then have to come to the Board for some amendments to their manning tables, begin the recruitment process, if that's necessary and appropriate at that time, and then the Board of Commissioners will be asked to take action fairly quickly on adjustments to those manning tables. So again, all of that is really up in the air right now, but that gives you an idea of what might happen, depending on what we learn later on this month. The Blue Ways Project that you've received updates on from the Planning Department in the past, that was the online system that allows people to plan trips and take advantage of our waterways throughout the county, and as well as restaurants and hotels and retail shops along our shoreline, was nominated by the Convention Visitors Bureau for a statewide award. The award was granted to this particular project, and this week, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, along with several members of the Planning Department, are up at a convention receiving that award. So congratulations to them. The GIS Director, who I'm sure some of you have met, Greg Brost, was invited by Google to attend a workshop out in California. He was one of 75 individuals throughout the United States identified by Google as someone who's working very effectively in mapping technologies and considered an expert, and was asked to participate in a program with Google to try and identify where we're going to be going in the future with mapping technology. So congratulations to Greg Brost. The St. Clair Intervention Academy, earlier this year, you may recall that we began working with the Intervention Academy and the Charter School at the Intervention Academy in trying to identify a new academy administrator and an authorizing agency for us. We had previously been working with RISA. They had requested that they be relieved of that duty and we began working with another agency, the Port Huron Schools, to act as our authorizing agent. If we couldn't secure one, then that would mean that the county would have to take over responsibility personally for educating the students out at the Intervention Center. And that's exactly why we had established the Charter School out there. So the state of Michigan, earlier this, this month, finally authorized the Port Huron Area School Board of Education to act as our authorizing agent. So we certainly want to thank the Charter School President, Juanita Giddings, and the school superintendent for Port Huron Schools, Ron Wollin, for the work they did to pull this together in a very, very short period of time. It did save the county a considerable amount of money in doing so. We had our.
Bill, before you go to the next one, how is that going to change in terms of the actual education piece? I mean, just Port Huron will virtually, will just be contracting them, so to speak?
No, not really. What, what Port Huron Schools would be doing was, they'll be responsible for filing a lot of the reports for us, overseeing our overall operation, making sure that our books balance, reporting what's going on out there to the Department of Education. So they're more of an administrative role or administrative function. The day-to-day operations, the, the teachers themselves are actually under contract with the Charter School Board that exists out there.
Just a comment about that. As one of the trustees of the Intervention Academy, we'll be able to continue to provide that same great program, just not only for the youth that are incarcerated in the juvie section, but also for those in the adult section, too. And I think we're, we're approaching almost 400 GEDs, but more importantly, the typical incarcerated is in the county jail or the juvenile center for less than a year. And they typically make between two to three changes in reading level, grade level in reading, and two to three levels of math improvement. So the, the young people that have been working at the Intervention Academy have just been doing a phenomenal job. Which brings me to the chili cook-off and I would like to invite everyone to the Seventh Annual St. Clair County Intervention Academy Chili and Fixing on Wednesday, October 24th, at the Intervention Center. And the money will be used to purchase blankets, scarves, hats for community service projects, buy shoes, coats for residents of the Intervention Academy, buying eyeglasses, and providing funds for personal needs. So if you get a chance and you like chili, great opportunity on the 24th.
What time is that, Howard?
It starts at 10:30 and continues until 1:30. Thank you.
Sure, just real quick, some news about the Convention Center project. As you know, we meet weekly, progress meetings to talk about the project, where we're at, review timelines, update one another on, on what everyone's been doing. The county is getting real close to going live on a website that will make a lot of information regarding the Convention Center project available to the public to access. As construction begins, on our side of the project, we'll be adding photo galleries to the site as well, which will be used hopefully by local residents, but also used by the Convention and Visitors Bureau to help market the facility to meeting planners throughout the region. The Convention and Visitors Bureau have moved out of their existing building, which is located right in the footprint of where the Convention Center will be located. We are working on disposition of the existing facility. In fact, in the next, I would say in the next week, there will be a notice published in the paper, we'll be requesting proposals for removal and reuse of the building. Hopefully, we'll be able to find someone that can reuse the building. If, if that doesn't work out, then we'll go to Plan B, which will be to deconstruct the building, reuse as much material as we can by community agencies, and then demolish the remainder of the building. But hopefully, we'll be able to receive some proposals from someone who might be interested in relocating and reusing that particular facility. The.
I, I went out and visited the culinary when they begin the process, begin the building program and I just wondered if, it's been about 10 days since I've looked at it, but things look very good there and I spoke with the, them at the event. What's the, is there any updates about, you can give us on that, like what's going on, I mean, with it?
Well, I think the, from what I heard this morning, the last set of footings were supposed to have been poured today. They've been testing the concrete and very shortly, the walls will begin going up. They'll have utilities that they'll have to run inside the building, but soon you'll probably see the masonry walls on the facility going up on the Baker College side. I'm sure any of you that drive by the Thomas Edison Inn have already noticed some of the changes to the exterior of the facility. So the, the schematics for the Convention Center itself are under development, so shortly, we think probably within the next six weeks, we'll get a look at, at what the latest view of the outside, as well as some of the interior of the building, what it might be looking like. We'll certainly be sharing those with the board as we move forward. Those schematic designs will be tested by CSL or Bill Kruger and by Convergence or Dave Grisel, so they'll be looking at them, letting us know either that the finishes proposed aren't, aren't nice enough, or you need to change this, you need to address that. So they'll be coaching us as we go along and enabling us to, to hopefully hit the market we're looking for. Earlier today, our construction manager met with our purchasing department to talk about procurement processes. We will be complying with all the county board's policies on all county-owned elements that will be constructed and the contracts that will be released for those. We are in the process of putting together some RFPs for a couple of the first elements that will have to be undertaken out there, so you'll see a little bit of work on some of the jointly owned portions of the property yet this year, some items that need to be taken care of before the weather closes in. We're also preparing an agreement with Dave French. Many of you may recall or have heard his name. He's been coaching our side of the team. He is a retired architect with French and Associates. He has a lot of experience in St. Clair County, working on school facilities, working on performing arts facilities. He, he does have deep roots in the community and he has been extremely valuable as we've moved through the negotiating process and identifying the construction manager, the architects and the agreements that we've had with them. So we finally have agreed on some terms and we will be bringing that to the board very shortly. So if you don't have any other questions, that's in the Administrator's Report.
The Visitor Convention Bureau was homeless, or did they move someplace?
No, they have actually moved into the Michigan, or I'm not sure if you consider it the Michigan Bank Building or the old SEMCO Building, just across the Black River and Military Street.
Just a quick question. We're still planning on going ahead and requiring that 70 percent of the work be performed by residents of St. Clair County and 70 percent of the items purchased from local vendors?
Correct. Those are our goals for the project, yes.
Any other questions for Bill at all?
I move to accept the Administrator's verbal report.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Mislenious business. David?
Just one thing. You all received this email, but I thought we should make note, the Michigan Department of Agriculture, the Animal Industry Division, and you know our animal control, I think the sheriff has been doing an amazing job out there, and we got a very good report from the state of Michigan. So he's been doing an exceptional job out there and I thought you should make note of it.
Okay, Mr. Greitap?
Tigers, six to one, bottom of the sixth inning.
Okay. Moving on, receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places and other information presented.
Favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Adjournment.
Move we adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.